Organization meeting held on January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. The meeting set forth the schedule of its regular meetings, which resolution was within seven days of passage. The schedule was sent to the Verona Cedar Grove Times, the Star Ledger, the Township of Verona, and the VEA. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. The Verona Board of Education operates under a consent agenda format. Any board member has the right to have an item pulled to be voted upon or discussed separately. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public and the press. Mr. Cruz, can you do the roll call for attendance, please?
Sure. Mr. Walker? Mrs. Bay? For the record, Mr. Day is absent. Mrs. Strappy?
Here.
Mrs. Frisco?
Here.
Mrs. Freshy?
Here.
We have Coram. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we get into full swing, I just really want to make a public statement. And tonight is a really, really exciting night for Verona Public Schools. And on behalf of this board, I want to officially welcome Ms. De Giuseppe. Welcome so much to the district. Ms. De Giuseppe began her tenure here officially on Friday, July first, and she hit the ground running. She's been meeting with our principals, our administrators, teachers, individual board members, leadership of the VMAC, Chief Kieranin, our team manager, Mr. Diarco, just to name a few. Ms. De Giuseppe brings with her decades of experience in education and over ten years as a sitting superintendent. Throughout the interview process, she never ceased to impress us with her knowledge, confidence, compassion, and her mantra of being a servant leader. Verona Schools is really at the brink of very exciting changes. With a new superintendent and many new faces across the district, we have a new head of guidance, director of facilities, a relatively new business administrator, and soon we'll have a new director of special services as well. We're poised to take the best of what's been put into place and expand into new directions to create more opportunities for our students. Our goal is to reflect on the past and look to the future. With all that said, Ms. De Giuseppe, we wish you much success, and we want you to know that this board is here to support all your efforts as you lead our district forward. So, welcome.
Thank you very much. It's been twelve days. But the good news is it feels like it's been a lot longer, and that's a good thing. It's been so welcoming. I just wanted to take a minute.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to acknowledge specifically Dr. Fenari and the support that she gave me across the transition from way back when I first started coming into the district to, you know, take a day here and there to get to know the administrators and supervisors. Next, each board member sitting here tonight made the time to come and meet with me for a really long period of time, and I really got to see again the pride with which you all do your, play your role and do your job here and how much you support this district. The central office administrator, Elton Frank Jorge, Mrs. Ackerman, even though she's new, Dr. Miller have really spent their time with me and have a lot of patience with my questions and my desire to learn a system. You would think that, you know, school districts run similarly. They don't. So, give me that time to learn. The principals and supervisors have also been really great in providing me with history and with support. And, you know, Mr. Nishrao and Jay, we met Jay. Jay's great. But over the past two weeks, I've been warmly welcomed here by members of the community. By, I met with, as you said, Chief Kieranin, Captain Watkins, and Detective Martin, Mr. Molinaro, Mr. Zender of the DPW, Mr. Diarco and Mr. Neal of the Township. And tomorrow I'm going to be meeting with Mr. Tamboro, who serves a dual role both as councilman and VEA president. Tomorrow night is my first municipal alliance meeting. Thursday night is the library board meeting. And so far, it's just been, you know, a really great introduction. I've already hired six staff members and had two exit interviews with some folks that you're going to approve the resignations this evening. So, twelve days seems like a month. But that's a good thing, and it's really great to be here and be immersed in the work that we're doing together. And really, summing it up, it really feels like a team.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I'm glad that you're so warmly welcomed. Hitting the ground running. I am going to propose a change in our agenda. We have our board self-evaluation, and our New Jersey School Board rep is running late. She was at another district. So, I'm going to pass it to Ms. De Giuseppe to do her superintendent report. And then when Ms. Peterson gets here, we'll slide that back into the agenda if nobody has any objections on that.
So, my report is actually going to be fairly short tight because I've only been here for twelve days. And it's summertime. So, really, just to give you an overview of what's happening in the district, our summer programs that are running are, you know, it's nice to walk through the building and this building and middle school today. The elementary schools as well to see kids learning and being productive and having fun. So, we have our splash, which is our first year of doing splash program, which we're doing this year, grade one reading and grades three in format. The ESY program is here for students that are recommended for that across all grade levels. The Verona Summer Enrichment or BC is pre-k through grade four. Summer music. We are happy to say that tomorrow night and Thursday night, Wizard of Oz. If you have an opportunity to come to the high school auditorium and see the production, I'm sure it's going to be amazing. And we have the recreation summer camps going on here as well. Lots of activity on the campus. Staffing update. Luckily, we don't have a lot left to do with the exception of the district position that we're just getting started. So, we are accepting and reviewing resumes for our math coach, and that's an Escher grant-funded position. We are hiring an HIV specialist and school counselor, which is going to be shared between the elementaries and HBW. We're actively interviewing. I think they may have narrowed it down to two candidates that they'll send to me. We are accepting and reviewing resumes and actively interviewing at least at each, F N Brown, sorry, for the kindergarten positions that we added. We are reposting and accepting resumes for school media specialists here at the high school. And with regard to director of special services position, again, we're all sorry to see frankly Dr. Mariello leave. But we did engage with Bryant Gesma, Kenoi, and Kazalek. They are a special ed consulting firm that will be assisting us with that search. We spent a lot of time with Dr. Mariello and Mr. Kenoi this past two days ago. Was it two days ago? Yesterday, yesterday. And he took a lot of information. He put together a parent survey, so we'll be sending out a special education parent survey to get a sense of what the community is looking for. And they're also going to assist in providing an interim in the meantime so that we can take our time and make sure we hire this new director. It's a very important position. I think it's the hardest job in the district, but making sure that we find the right person. So, that's where we are with regard to staffing. What's going on in the summer, but this is stuff that, and this is not an exhaustive list. It's very busy. Summers are very busy in school districts, even though they don't, you think they wouldn't be. A lot of curriculum writing going on. We are reviewing the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment and Advanced Placement Score Analysis. We're doing staffing. School schedules are being created at all the schools. End of year reports are being finalized and submitted to various agencies. We are planning for professional learning for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We're also planning for welcoming our new staff and new staff orientation and reviewing some of the recommendations from Grand River Solutions with, coming up next week, Mrs. Shipper and Dr. Miller. And again, that's not an exhaustive list, but that's kind of an overview of what's happening right now. And that's my report.
Do any of the board members have any questions or comments? If no, thank you, Ms. De Giuseppe. Next on the agenda is the business administrator report. So, Mr. Cruz.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few updates in my report tonight. First, the one update around finance. We have the main board secretary and the treasurer and the board transfer report on for resolution tonight. And I'm happy to report that they're on agreement, as it should be. We're in the process of closing out the fiscal year ending June thirtieth. And reviewing that, we're also looking at carrying over grant funding that are available with balances for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The business office is also working closely with our auditors at this time in preparation for the twenty-one, twenty-two audit, which will be taking place at the end of September, early October. In the coming weeks, I'll be sharing information regarding student voluntary accident insurance. And what that is, is basically voluntary insurance that parents are able to purchase. I believe the cost for that insurance is about a hundred dollars for the year. And what it covers is basically a twenty-four hour, whether it's in athletics or after school and playgrounds or anything like that. So, I believe some schools are already familiar with this. Some parents are already familiar with the insurance. And it's a, it is a policy that piggybacks from what Verona Board of Ed actually has with their insurance broker. So, it's the information that I'll provide. It's at a reduced cost compared to other insurance that are probably out there. Also, in addition to that, I'll be sharing information regarding our free reduced lunch application for qualifying families. Our meals are completely free. They're covered one hundred percent by the board. We encourage all families that qualify to submit their application at the first week of school in September. Lastly, this week, I'll be advertising a request for proposal for two, or what we call an RFP, for two professional services. One is for an architect of record, and the other is for banking services. The RFP will be advertised and posted on our website, and it'll be posted for two weeks. So, that will be forthcoming, and this concludes my report for tonight. Thank you very much.
Mr. Cruz, just so we're all on the same page, the free and reduced lunch, that does not mean that we're going to the National School Lunch Program. Just to make sure, when you say that if someone qualifies for free lunch or reduced lunch, it simply means that the board will flip the bill, but then we will get a reimbursement at whatever that year's current rate is from the state of New Jersey or from the federal government for that child's meals. It wouldn't be like Verona's bleeding money by doing this. It would actually be a, get the kids the food they need, and we'd be reimbursed.
So, because we don't participate in the National School Lunch Program, we actually don't get the reimbursable dollars in that program. So, this is strictly free meals for families that do qualify, and we do absorb that cost. So, it's something that Verona has always done. And the program that was on the table for school districts last year, that is no longer something that the USDA actually offered this year. So, we are not able to apply and be able to offer free meals district-wide and join the program. So, we are going to continue with the current program that we have, the current food service program with Pomtonian and not with the restrictions of the National School Lunch Program.
So, just to, I think it's a very good thing that the kids are going to get the meals that they need, right? And the families are going to make sure their kids get the meals they need. And I think it'll also give us a metric now to see where, what's the extent of the problem in Verona? Is it sustainable for us to keep, you know, flipping the bill for these meals, which it might be? Or we might see the number is such a large number, but we might want to consider switching.
Yeah, perfect. And just to give you some context of where we are. So, this past school year, we ended up with twenty-six students, whether free or reduced lunch qualifications. The year prior to that, we only had about thirteen, fifteen students. And I think, and the year prior to that, it was around, it hovered around the same, and then we doubled last year. So, I'm anticipating the numbers to be around that twenty-six. And if we get to thirty and we see the trends actually creeping up, then at that point, I think we're still like at one percent of our whole entire population. But once we hit a certain threshold, it's going to trigger for us to definitely join the program.
There is, there, you have to have a minimum percentage of your population or to be able to join the national program, is what you're saying. Right?
So, you can, you can join.
At any time.
At any time. And at, I believe it's four percent, you're required.
Okay. And then just to make sure that I understand that when we are not, okay. So, I guess this is maybe my own, just from my own perspective, being a teacher in a school district that does participate in the national free and reduced lunch program because they qualify, right? And it's four percent or more of the population. That the food that is served under that program, under Pomtonian, for example, is actually different than the food that is served if this entire school district is not part of the free and reduced lunch. However, in a district that is not part of the national free and reduced lunch program, where the Board of Ed does foot the bill for those twenty-six or more students, that those students who receive free and reduced lunch get the same exact lunch options as students who do not receive free and reduced lunch, which, in my personal opinion, is a better quality than the national free and reduced lunch. I've seen the difference between the two, but that's just my two cents on that. And then the question I was going to ask, you actually answered, was the percentage of students that we currently have in the program. Thank you.
One follow-up question, I think it was for superintendent's report. We're looking to hire a math coach through the Escher funds. Is this the final hire we're going to look to do via the Escher funds? Does that seem like it's accurate? At a certain point, like we're, those funds are going to run out. They're not going to be applicable, but we're still going to have that person's benefits and their salary. I just want to make sure that we're just double checking to make sure we haven't put too many people under that, hiring under that umbrella.
We haven't hired a tremendous number of people under the Escher grant. This will take us out to twenty-two, correct? So, we have three years to build that salary and benefits into the budget if we want to keep that position.
A reminder, Mr. Walker, to that this is a replacement for the resignation.
Very good. So, we hired, we initially hired the position.
Under the Escher, but then this person resigned, and now we're replacing.
Thank you very much for that clarification. That was important.
If there's no more questions or comments for Mr. Cruz, Ms. Peterson did get in. That's where I went to go, let her in. She was locked out. So, we're going to swing back and put that piece back into our presentation. And Ms. Peterson works for the New Jersey School Board Association. Part of our evaluation process, it used to be part of CUSAC, and now Verona has maintained it as a best practice, is to do a board self-eval and to have an outside person come and cover the results with us. So, thank you, Ms. Peterson.
I could definitely attest that your school security is in place because I walked around the building and could not get it. And so, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Again, like was mentioned, to talk about your board self-evaluation and really just wanted to reiterate the fact that, you know, like I said, it is no longer required. So, the boards that do it continue to do a board self-evaluation, you know, considering it to be a good governance practice, that if you hold the rest of the district accountable, this is how you hold yourselves accountable by taking that step back and reflecting on the work that you do. So, for the benefit of our public here, each board member fills out an online board self-evaluation individually. And then New Jersey School Boards compiles those individual responses into one anonymous compiled document for board discussion. So, that is what we'll be reviewing here tonight. And as I go through it, you know, we'll be talking, you know, not so much my comments, but kind of reflecting back on, you know, the comments that the board made about its work. So, four out of the five board members completed the board self-evaluation. And the board self-evaluation has two parts to it, about you as the board and then about you as the board member. There are nine different areas that we look at, and it's based on a four-point-oh scale. So, you know, most importantly, looked at the board scores over those nine areas and kind of looked at what the overall average was of those nine areas. So, in this case, it was three-point-five and use that to also look and see how did we do last year just to kind of, you know, make sure that, you know, we are somewhat consistent. And so, but, you know, recognizing each time, every year, we're a new board. But the board score last year, the overall average was a three-point-seven. So, just kind of as we look at that, and then also looked at the range of scores. So, the area that the board evaluated itself the highest was a three-point-seven, and that was in finance. And then the area that the board evaluated itself the lowest was a three-point-one, and that's in board and community. And while I say lowest, obviously, it's not a low score, but just from the way that the board evaluated itself. And so, we're just going to kind of walk you through some of the things here, and then please feel free to stop at any time. And, you know, this ideally is a conversation about the board because, like I said, this is talking about your work and, you know, your assessment of your work. So, the first page just talks about the board and what you value. So, one of the things that we look at from New Jersey School Boards is recognizing that student achievement is the basis of the work that we do. You know, how did you as the board, you know, rate that? And the board rated that as a four-point-oh of saying that that's, you know, all of you can said that to be vital, the work that you do. So, again, recognizing that, you know, we certainly have our priorities in the place where it needs to be. So, as we look at each one of the sections, the first section that the board evaluated itself was planning. And so, looking at planning not only from the perspective of, you know, looking at setting goals, but also making sure that, you know, we've looked at the mission, the vision, that we have, you know, provided the opportunity for community input into that, and then looked at, you know, your board goals as well. So, as we look at kind of, you know, some of the things that the board mentioned, you know, I think that the board said that it really acknowledges the fact that, you know, not only do we have to set the goals, but we also have to make sure that we have a process in place to review them on a periodic basis. And I think someone mentioned that you do have like a systematic process in place for the board to do that. You know, continue it, you know, someone mentioned the importance of engaging the public. And then someone mentioned, you know, we recognize that because you have a strategic plan, and that is, you know, usually essentially a five-year plan, that that will guide what the district goals are because we are taking the input from our stakeholders and asking them where they want to see the district go in the next five years. And then the way we make that be a living, breathing plan is by bringing it to life by it being a priority when we set those annual district goals. So, I think it was mentioned that that is how your board does that. So, the board, you know, so there was mention about kind of the board goals then saying, so, you know, board goals are your work. And, you know, so saying perhaps as a group, you might want to give more thought to looking at, you know, things that you're going to identify as focus or priority of things that you would like to work on to advance your governance work, recognizing, you know, that there's more and more research that says that high-performing boards can make a positive impact on student achievement. So, that's another value of the board self-evaluation is that it helps identify areas that perhaps you might want to consider as you look at board goals. The next section was policy. And so, when we talk about policy, we talk not only about or consider not only the actual kind of written policy documents that the board is responsible for, but also making sure, do we understand our role? Recognizing that as a board, we're a policymaking body and that running the school district is, you know, the responsibility of the superintendent. And do we understand that difference in those roles? So, I, you know, this was a strong area for the board. I kind of like drew a line where you can see that everyone agreed that the board was either commendable or good in all of the areas related to policy. I go and talked about the fact that you have a good process in place for updating your policies. And now it's said that you're kind of now proactively looking at even updating outdated policies. And I know that, you know, your board just did a policy wellness check with New Jersey School Board. So, I would assume that that's helping you through this process as well. So, again, you know, an important way to keep your focus on that policy work. Then the next section was student achievement. So, again, it's, you know, said earlier that the board identified student achievement as, you know, something that's a priority, but it's further exemplified in the student achievement area here where the board said, you know, that it recognizes that that's the focus of its work. And, you know, talked about how important it is to, you know, to set high standards and to make sure that we are providing opportunities for every student. But again, understanding what is our community's aspirations for our students. And then the board said that it relies on the expertise of the staff to, you know, help the board understand this work. One member did mention something about, you know, perhaps a more focus could be placed on non-college-bound learners and also special ed students as perhaps additional opportunities. Then the next section we looked at was finance. And here we said that that was the highest area that the board evaluated itself at a three-point-seven. And the board touched on all kinds of different ways and work that's been done in finance. Talked about cutting costs, your referendum work, looking at technology, looking at professional development for the department, and then talked about work that's being done in procedures and practices in the area. And then from the board's perspective, you know, making sure that you are kind of monitoring the financial health of the district. But also importantly, you know, part of the board's work is that balance of saying, you know, what, how can we provide the best education we possibly can for our students at a price that our community can afford? And what is that balance? And how do we best achieve that balance? And it's different for every community. And, you know, it's becoming a more challenging balance as the needs of our students are changing and increasing at the same time that perhaps sometimes the funding is declining and trying to then, you know, accomplish, like I said, doing that best that we can for both groups. The next piece is board operations. So, that talks about how we as a board, yeah, how we as a board do our work, talking about how we, you know, work together as a board team. And then also looking at our method of governance, which in this case would be, you know, the board working with committees. So, you know, making sure then that that is the most effective structure for our board. And, you know, say that it would be very unusual to find a board that doesn't work in committees just because of the complexity of the work and all of the things that you have to examine and look at. So, you know, found committees to be the most effective way to do that work. And so, I think that that was mentioned here. You know, the board in some of the, some of the comments here, it acknowledged, you know, that the importance of, you know, trust and respect and consensus building and saying that perhaps right now it's not where the board would like it to be. And then someone had mentioned that perhaps it might be helpful if the board had guidelines or kind of expected code of conduct. And I have to say that that is work that I've been doing with a lot of boards is, we're saying that we would like to make a commitment to one another, make a commitment to our community that, you know, that we can That, you know, that we consider the code of ethics that the state has imposed on us as our minimum standard. And that we are going to establish higher standards for ourselves. And so boards have been developing it. And so I have some samples, if you'd be interested of code of governance, best practices. That the board identifies for itself as practices that it is going to hold itself accountable to. In doing its governance work. So, you know, like I said, that's something that has been. I'm kind of taking off here in terms of an area that the, you know, boards would like to make that commitment to their communities to do that. The next section is board performance. So while we looked at the other one of just kind of our governance structure, this is more looking at. You know, how we work together in terms of, you know, maintaining the, the code of ethics, looking at confidentiality. You know, looking at how we work together and. You know, so one member had mentioned or indicated that they thought the board was unsatisfactory in working together in an atmosphere of mutual trust and respect. So again, that would be an area, you know, that the board highlighted and so kind of making sure that we do. You know, as a board, again, as you're looking at your goals and looking at things that you might need and want to work on, consider this to perhaps be, you know, an area that you would consider. Then the next section was board and superintendent relationship. So I mean, you know, here the board acknowledged that that relationship might be different, recognizing that you had an interim superintendent. But you know, as we talk about board superintendent relationships, usually the, the things that make for a, you know, a really valuable partnership between in the board and the superintendent. Is really making sure then, you know, as we talk about trust and we talk about respect. And communication and utilizing the chain of command. And then also that importance of understanding our roles. And those are all the things that make for, you know, a really. Valuable board and superintendent partnership. I mean, the board did mention the fact that it successfully completed a superintendent search, right? So, you know, and, you know, recognizing that the board did spend a lot of time work in that area this year. The next section then looks at board and staff relationships. You know, so if we say that all of, if we are adhering to that chain of command. And all of our communication goes through the superintendent, then how do we have a relationship with the staff? So really, you know, we would need to make sure that we have good personnel policies, make sure that. You know, we are respecting the chain of command that we are providing for the professional development needs of our staff. Importantly, that we're recognizing our staff and we have the opportunity at our public board meetings like this to make sure that we are recognizing the great work that our staff does. And then also from the board's perspective, as much as we can to be supporting that work by attending school events and attending other events. That would help support the work that's going on in our schools and kind of hold ourselves accountable to trying to do that the best that we can. And then the last part of this was board and community. And so this is where I had mentioned that this is where the board evaluated itself the lowest. It evaluated itself at a three point one. And if you look at number seven of the indicators there, where it says has an effective community relations program. That was the lowest indicator in the entire evaluation that the board evaluated itself as a two point three in that area. And then, you know, as we look at, you know, the difference between the top and the bottom about, you know, how we said the board does and then how we do as individual members. Usually wherever is the lowest area that the board evaluated itself is where there's the largest gap. Between, you know, with the board and what you said as members. So you can see that, you know, about you as the member was a three point seven. Versus about the board as being a three point one. And that's, like I said, that's pretty. Much the case of wherever the lowest area is for the board. So I think the board was really clear of saying that we, we recognize and acknowledge that we act as the representative for every child. In the district and we know that that's our work and that's who we, you know, have to make sure that we provide for. And, you know, acknowledge that this has been a difficult time sometimes to do that. And that there is definitely more work than that the board has identified that it would like to do in this area. And before I go on past the, you know, talking about the kind of the open ended questions, I didn't know if there's anything with any of these nine standards that. Anyone wanted to add that we didn't talk about or.
I just want to make a couple of comments on, on some of the things that you hit on and communication. We absolutely as a board recognize. There's always room for improvement and not that the difficulties of this past year are an excuse or a reason. But we all recognize that we need to not only listen. But actively listen and respond better. So it's definitely something that we're working on. We've had these conversations with. Ms. De Giuseppe coming in. And I think there is a full commitment from the board to really improve in that area. I think also too, one of the things that we've talked about and what I've read, you know, reading through all the comments is. We did get a little bit out of our lane. So. And again, not to use the pandemic as an excuse, but when emotions were so high and there was a lot of anxiety and unknowns and pivoting all over. We, we got down in the weeds more than we belonged. So we've been making a concerted effort, a really focused effort. To get back to that policymaking, that thirty thousand foot view. And letting the chain of command do its work where, you know, there's some things that come to us that we shouldn't even really know about. Like it shouldn't even get to that level. So we're trying, I think it's an education piece on, on both part from board members, from our administration and from the public that we all have to work on together. Of knowing our roles and who's accountable and responsible for what. So I think this is like a really honest. Evaluation, like not all rosy, not all good to read, but I think it's really genuine and helpful to us, to me personally, anyway. So thank you and thank the board members for participating in it.
And I think that that really is the value, you know, that sometimes we don't. You know, much of our work at meetings is focused on the work of the district and we a lot of times don't take the time to talk about our work, to talk about the board's work. And so sometimes, you know, filling out the board self evaluation allows us to have those conversations. And allows us to look at those types of things. Cause like I said, most of the time we're focused on the district's work. And perhaps not so, you know, as much on our governance work. And so this kind of helps us pull, you know, pull back and look at that. So. Then the last piece of this talked about, you know, recognizing that student achievements are highest priority. What are three major challenges we would see facing the district? So, you know, not surprising, the board said transitioning to a new superintendent, recognizing that. You know, that will be part of your work this year. We, I, when I came in, heard you talking a little bit about staff hiring. So the board, you know, also mentioned that. Keeping our finances strong, talk about growth in our student population and the impact that has in our facilities. Like your DEI work was mentioned, the impact that the state has on the work that you do in terms of some of the rules and standards. You know, that we talked about reestablishing trust on the board or, you know, putting some focus there. And then just again, making sure that, you know, the, the work that we need to do, our student achievement work. And then the last piece of this was the last page asking you, you know, if you wanted recognizing your policymaking body, if there was any particular training or anything. And again, the board, you know, mentioned its continued focus on policy. I talked about communication, talked about community relations. So all of the things really that we have talked about. So that was really all that I had in terms of, you know, summary going over this. So didn't know if any board members had any additional questions or thoughts.
In seeing that, obviously a concern of the board. For, for those of us that answered was, you know, community relations, communication with the public. And how do we get better at that, you know, and it's something that we talked about last year and the year before that. And, you know. If, if major gains are not being had in that, you know, and I've attended plenty of NJ SBA county meetings and. All my mandated training and extra training, and it's something I ask at every meeting. And the answer that I get from the NJ SBA is, I know everybody's really having trouble with that. But there is no training from the NJ SBA. I mean, I, what I would be looking for is sort of an ongoing workshop, maybe three to four times a year. That really helps. Talk about best practices in communication within code of ethics, within confidentiality. And, you know, within all the laws in New Jersey. And what are best practices? I mean, I think we know what best practices are and we do try to follow them. I think for risk of breaking rules or laws that hinders us sometimes, you know, and I think that's. Can be very frustrating from a community perspective. But I guess I, I'm not satisfied with the training that I've received. From NJ SBA, who is our, you know, who's our source? So, you know, if you're going to take anything back, I guess the NJ SBA, that is really something that I would be looking for and as soon as possible, you know, cause obviously this is something that we. Continually talk about as something is a concern to us. And have we made progress? I think we've made some progress in some areas, especially as indicated by your self evaluation, but I, I think we can do so much better. So, I mean, that's, that's what I would just ask of the NJ SBA.
Yeah, no, I mean, I agree completely. I mean, we have. Every year we have a, a full one day program on community relations and communication. And so that I think just happened. In May, but it's during the day for those, you know, people who, you know, have the opportunity to attend at that time. It, you know, has also been a topic at some of the county meetings. I know that I was at a county meeting where, you know, they brought someone in. New Jersey has a New Jersey School Public Relations Association. And so they brought someone in who is the public relations person in another district. And he offered a link to the communication plan that he put together for his district that said, you know, other boards. So I'll be happy. To share that with you as perhaps just something you, that you can even look at as a jumping off point. And, you know, because that communication plan was that indicator that you evaluated the lowest. So here's someone who's a professional in that, you know, organization and he put a plan together that he is willing to share with other districts. So I would be happy to provide you the link to that so that you can, you know, kind of see what one might look like to kind of, like you say, help. Continue to move forward. And I shall also bring back the feedback that perhaps once a year during the day, it's not quite enough.
No, and, and again, if like I, I can't take off of work for something like that. And almost all of our training requires us to take off of work for that. And this is something I say every year, please provide us with training opportunities after general work hours. And that would really help us move forward. Thank you.
So, you know, one of the things that we've started to do even with this one is, and I perhaps we don't make it really even clear enough is that you can register. For some of these full day things, if you can't attend, you can log back into the site and we record everything. And it's out there for a month. So then you can watch all the recordings, you have access to all the PowerPoints and access to all of the materials. So even if, you know, like, don't let it stop you from registering yourself if you can't attend that day. Because by registering yourself, then you have access to all the material for a month. So.
Yeah, I didn't realize that. And a lot of times I know when I can't take off from work, I don't register. Yeah. So that's a really good tidbit. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything else?
All right. Thank you so much.
Yeah, Charlene, thank you very much. It's always Ms. Peterson. I'm sorry. We appreciate you coming here and it is something that does help us. I know myself, when you sit and you do this alone and you're reading it, it's. I find it very helpful. So, and I appreciate you coming to do it publicly for us.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
Okay. So we are going to revert back to. Our agenda and we have our committee reports next. So we had education, special education that met.
I think it's Miss Strapping. Yes, um. Mrs. De Giuseppe went through much of my report, stealing my thunder. No, thank you. Just a couple of additional things, AP results are in or being analyzed right now. Along with the NJ, NJ SLA report. Dr. Miller is currently sort of matching the NJ, NJ SLA scores. With the MAP growth scores and. That's sort of an effort to not only solidify the work that we're doing with the MAP growth program, but to also show the state that, hey. This MAP growth test really is great and it really works and actually might be a little bit better than what you keep making us do every year. So. That was a nice piece of our ed committee. You talked about curriculum writing, talked about math coach. Elementary report card revisions are currently being done. And. We talked about that. And I think that's really it. I mean, otherwise it was, you know, personnel, which is all on the agenda.
Amazing.
I could jump in Sarah. So I did not participate in this, in the self evaluation, but I, I will self evaluate in that. I haven't been a very good board member this past week. I, I was away for most of last week and I didn't communicate effectively. So it's, it's, this is all me for not communicating effectively, for not having kind of gone through the agenda. But when we get to three point four, Mr. Cruz. You know, my vote of yes, a couple of months ago for the DEI thing that was based on the idea that. We'd look at the recommendations first and then we'd look to decide if and, and how much DEI support we, we do. Because I don't believe it's part of the V, the Verona teacher's contract to have this particular stipend item. I accept, I hate to do this on, on a superintendent, I'm really excited about his first meeting, but it's, so it's my fault for not communicating that earlier. And for not having, and kind of have it overlooked out of the agenda because it's no one's fault, but my fault. But for three point four, I'd like to pull out this, the DEI parts. Until we get those recommendations. And again, I, I accept full responsibility for, for having, you know, been away this past week and then having overlooked that. So I apologize.
So are, are you asking to table those for today?
Well, I'm not asking to ta, if, if we vote, if we look at the, I'm pulling that up for separate discussions, separate vote.
Okay.
Now.
A separate discussion.
I could see myself very likely voting yes, once I see the recommendations from the, the, the grand, the Grand Rivers, Grand Rapids, I keep forgetting that. But I, a big part of the vote that I made, that there was a swing vote was that I wanted to see X before I, before we did Y. So I want, I want to see what the X value is based on these recommendations. And if the recommendations are, are solid, that it's, it's very likely I would vote yes for these stipends in the following meeting. But because I haven't seen the, the, the Grand River set of solutions yet, I'm going to respectfully look to pull that out. And if there's two of us that also feel that it's one with the person that feels the same way, I'm happy tabling that, but. I, I don't expect to vote yes on that, those particular items at this time.
Clarify those stipends are going to be voted upon, but voted upon separately.
For three point four.
Three point four.
Only the ones for, for my, from what I'm pointing at is the, is the D I coordinator up and down.
Okay. Anything else on education?
Just one more thing is that we are still waiting on that small bus. Still waiting. And I know Mr. Cruz is working really hard to convince them that it is high time that we get that bus.
So good news. We did get documents with the VIN number. They requested an affidavit to have power attorney to be able to kind of like get the BMB registration. So that should be en route and we should have it first week of August.
That would be spectacular. Thank you.
The, the large bus, that's the one that we're working on and, and it's a different company. And we're hoping to have it by the beginning of school. The last update that, that I received was that probably middle, in the middle of, of August. Will be able to have like the VIN number, et cetera, and, and actually start the paperwork for that. So hopefully. Fingers crossed it will, that large bus will be here by the, the beginning of, of, of the school year.
Okay, thank you. And the, the last thing for special committee was the two unbudgeted items. Was for another elementary special education resource teacher. And a preschool speech and pathologist, since we have expanded our preschool program. And that's it.
Does anybody have any questions in regard to education? Okay. And the other committee that met was athletics, Ms. Briscoe.
Yes, I can take that. Thank you, Mrs. Fershey. So believe it or not, fall preseason is underway. Just crazy to say that, but they're out there doing their thing. Boys and girl basketball camps were held. At up here at the high school at one of the, I believe at the boys camp are VHS alumni. A twenty seventeen graduate who plays out in Germany for the professional. a 2017 graduate who plays out in Germany for the professional basketball team. He came to the camp to visit with the, with the boys. So that was exciting for them. The boys basketball has a summer league that is going on at Bloomfield High School right now. Sports will start, bless you. We'll start in full, football will start on August 10th. Tennis will begin on eight, August 17th. And then all other sports will begin on August 22nd. If you came to the meeting tonight and came to the Sampson and pulled into the parking lot, you saw all those trailers in the lot and you probably are wondering what is going on. We are, we were asked and it was approved. A24 Films is filming. They're using the, the fields. And I believe they used, they filmed two days in our gym. So the movie or the movie, movie will be called When the TV Glows. And I believe they're also filming in some homes and around town as well. Another VHS alumni graduate, she works for the company A24 Film. So she put Verona on the map by saying, look at Verona High School. So thank you for that. I believe the producer is Emma Stone for that film. And let's see, so that's the field usage. And the other discussion we had was possibly it's very in the beginning stages is cameras for the fields, but with the pricing still has to be looked at and all that. So that was just discussion. And coming up for a field trip, which it'll be back after COVID is the music trip for the high school going to Disney World in March. So that'll be great for them again to bring that back. And I think I don't think I missed.
Nope. I think you covered everything.
If I could cut in Pam, I, I think it's so great to how, to show kind of how lucky we are in Verona, like it's my son's entering the high school now and literally from seven in the morning with weight room starting all the way until sometime to eight or nine o'clock at night, like to have him be part of positive sports activities in the summertime. To me, I think such a luxury that benefit that we have. So just thank you to the AD and the coaches and then everyone that kind of made the field available and the coaching available and we picked up the insurance and all these things. I think it's that important for, to do that for the kids. And the movie's called When the TV Glows.
Yes.
Nice. I like it.
Yeah. If you Google it, there's like a little summary about it.
I will.
Find out a little bit about it. So yeah, it's exciting. Yeah. It's good news.
The only, not that you missed it, but just around field usage. Ms. Pomerex, he talked about just tightening up our process on the paperwork, getting consistency on the cost of the fields and making sure all signatures are in place. And again, it's part of best practices. And I think we're really poised to, you know, look at wherever our cracks are and come up with really good processes. So she is working on that as well.
Just to quickly follow up on best practices. I just thank you, Mr. Walk. Oh, there you are. Thank you, Mr. Walker. For your comments before about missing the committee meeting. And it's not that big of a deal, but I think best practice going forward as a board is that if we know that we're going to miss a committee meeting, that we find a sub, somebody to fill in, because it really is important to have two people there, two sets of eyes, two sets of ears to really make sure we're capturing all the information, asking all the questions, communicating community concerns, things like that.
Yeah, I think it's a very good idea. And I, yeah, I missed it. That's it.
Thank you. Right. Excellent. Thank you for the committee reports. And at this point, we're going to open to public comments that are on agenda action items. So anything that's in the packet, a resolution that we're voting on, if you have a comment around that, now would be the time to approach the podium. And I see none. So we are going to close that public comment on agenda items and move on to discussion items before we do the roll call. So Mr. Walker, you brought up your discussion items already that you want those stipends to be pulled out and voted upon separately. So we will do that. And
I would like to, we have two policies on here that we did not get to discuss in ed committee. And the ed committee meeting was, was huge. Most of it was, you know, revolving around NJ SLA and personnel. So I, I did want to, oh wait, I have it on here. Sorry.
My resolution number 10?
Yes. Let me just get to it. And I have the numbers on it. We did not get to discuss. It is mandatory. It is a mandated policy, 0143.2, the high school representative to the Board of Education. I know we had started that discussion and then we were going to finish it at this, at our last ed committee meeting, but Mr., without Mr. Walker there, I really wanted him to be a part of the discussion as well. I was wondering if we could table that for our August 30th meeting. Is that, is that going to be okay? Since that's a mandated one?
Yeah, it'll be fine. We'll just start in October.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, because it's a nomination process that gets vote on it.
Well, right. So they're going to do their elections anyway. So in September, so that would make sense. It would start October anyway. So we'll, we'll be able to to hammer that out at our next ed committee meeting in August. And then go from there. Okay. And then that one, and then the 7250, we never got a chance to discuss that one again. And we had tabled it with anticipation of discussing it. And so if we can put that one on for the August 30th as well.
Yeah, I put that back on as a first reading instead of a second. I know you had a first reading on it. Because I wasn't involved with the discussion at all, although I did find Lydia's notes today.
Yes, Sarah, I think it's a really wise idea to take 7250 off as well.
Okay. Yeah. So that way we can, I know it's, I know it's just on for a first reading, but we really need to work on that a little bit more, I think, before we can vote that in. I guess if it's just a first reading, that's fine, because then our second reading would be our August 30th meeting anyway. So we would be able to make adjustments to that before the next meeting. Yeah, we can leave it in for a first, we can leave it in for a first reading, because then we can make adjustments on it, Mr. Walker.
So, um, 0143 dot two, what that's coming out.
Yeah, that one, that one, we really haven't even looked at at all. I think 7250, we really just needed to make amendments to at this point.
So we're going to keep them on.
But with 7250.
That's a first reading.
The first reading though, but like we look at that, like the update, when it says the, the part where it says current status or next step. It says none at this time. So why did we put that on there if we had nothing current or nothing new to add to it?
No, it was a first reading and then we tabled it because we wanted to discuss it further. And then we never got to discuss it further because our last ed committee meeting was last week.
Still the most recent edit that we'd had as of like.
That was, since we tabled it, that's, that language is still in there. Yep.
Okay. So what's the, the only real benefit of voting yes is that we'd only have to vote yes one more time once we edited it.
Correct.
What, what's the, I guess, what's the rush?
Table it. We could table it and then vote and then vote our first reading for August 30th and then do again for September.
I would prefer if we did that.
Okay. Should we?
Then it won't go to second reading and adoption until September, but I don't think that's a problem.
No, that's not, that's not. So should we vote to table? Oh, so we don't, we don't have to.
Are you okay with removing those two to do at the next meeting?
Okay.
Okay, so 0143.2 and 7250 is going to be removed to vote on at the August 30th meeting. Is there any other discussion before we do a motion to vote?
I do have a question for Ms. De Giuseppe. Just some questions regarding 5722 student journalism. Letting know this is a mandated and it's replacing a, an abolished policy. I guess my concern behind the language that's currently in there now is if a student uses. So right, so there's state statute, right, which is this policy, right, which is what this policy is based on, which supersedes any school or district regulation or policy. My concern is that then what this does is that if a, well, first, let me ask this question. Is it only this policy only surrounds district journalistic endeavors?
I believe so.
Okay. I guess, because just to voice the concern is that then a student could commit hate speech in and be protected from this by, by this policy.
Yes, because they're protected for free, free speech. But
Right.
We, I'm going to defer to Mr. Roberts. We can set this at a more stringent level with regard to our own policies with school journalism?
Yes, you can always go beyond what the minimum requires. Full disclosure, I have not reviewed this policy.
Okay. So then I'd like to table that as well. So we can review that. And at our next ed committee meeting, we can really sort of dissect that and make sure that our students are protected. You know what I mean? Because this is a, if, if they're going to be writing in a school or district journalistic enterprise, you know, we want to make sure that they're able to use their free speech. But I don't want them.
Productive way.
Yeah, protective way. I don't want them to get into trouble per se. You know what I mean?
And in the meantime, I'll review the actual statute.
Right.
To make sure.
And then we can talk about that. So I guess with this said, these are three big policies that we need to go over. And I know I've mentioned it in the past, is the creation of another committee. And what are we, five, six, how many committees we have? Five? To do an additional committee as a policy, a policy revision, policymaking committee. And I don't think it's a committee that necessarily needs to meet every month. And it could be a set like four times a year or even five times a year, and then meeting as needed as things sort of come up. Because this is something like our ed committee meetings are huge. I mean, you know.
Well, because they're everything. They're education, special education, policy, personnel, they're everything.
So when we could.
Revamp on how that goes.
That's what I'm thinking.
Policy piece could come out and go into community resources.
Right. Because sometimes policy alone is 45 minutes.
Well, in policy, there's, there's two different types of policy, right? The policy updates from the stress estimate, which are tend to be, you know, you know, code changes, statute changes, minute language changes. Yeah, things like that. And then there's, for instance, there's a policy that I'm working on now with the high school and middle school administration on grading, grading practices. So that's something that would come from internally that may come up at other times. But stress estimate puts out their, their updates like every two, sometimes every three months. So it's not a monthly committee. It wouldn't be a monthly committee.
But I think, you know, to that effect is that we have done a good job, but we could do a better job of making sure that stress estimate's recommendations fit our district, fit our strategic plan, which will be new soon and fit our, you know, our mission and our vision for our district. So I think I mean, is that something we've?
This would be something that, this is, this would be the board president at any time can propose a new committee. And she has the, the option to assign people there. We don't have to accept that assignment, but you know, I think we all would if we were asked. But I'm not sure if this would come from Diane. I think it would have to come from, this De Giuseppe, I don't think it would come from, I think it has to come from Lisa.
Oh, yeah. That's, I was just bringing it up to the board.
My question being if it's an ad hoc, if there's a time limit on the length that this committee can be in place, right?
This board. So when, when we reorganize next time.
Okay.
You'd rather have to reup it or make it a formal.
Okay. So then if we did that, you're saying at the January reorg meeting, it would need to, to get redone.
Correct.
All right. So let's talk about that a little bit more. And then at the August 30th meeting, if that's the way we want to go, then we can certainly do that then.
Okay.
Okay. Can I just add to Mr. Walker's comment about 3.4? So I know he had asked to have it tabled and I, I kind of agree because I believe from our last meeting, we had said that we were going to wait for the, the finding, the findings of what we get. So
So he, he asked to pull it out to vote on it separately.
Pam, if you recommend we table it, I'll support you on that too.
I mean, I, that's what I thought we did the last meeting. So we didn't get the findings yet.
That's not accurate. What we said at the last meeting is that we were going to table it for the next meeting because we were looking for Ms. De Giuseppe to provide us with a rules and responsibilities and that going forward, any stipend that's coming from outside the contract, best practice is also to attach with it a either rules and responsibilities or job description that goes along, expectations that goes along with those stipends. And that was provided in the.
And that may have been what, what certain board members were saying. But, but the reason I proposed that we take it off the last meeting was, you know, I, my understanding when we, when I voted yes for the Grand Rivers was we were going to see what the, the assessment was going to be. And when I know there's going to be some parts that are going to be valuable to us, but I'm, I don't know how much of it's going to be valuable, right? So I, I didn't, I don't want to vote yes towards this. I don't, the math in my head, it looks like probably upwards of, of almost $20,000 of stipends until we see what the actual scope of recommendations are and which of these recommendations we're going to say, yes, we're, we're going to look to address because we think it's sensible for Verona and which recommendations we say, well, we're happy to receive that, but this might not be what, what's, what's best for us. I, I should have made my voice a little more clear in that because I, I don't think I communicated that as well. But before, you know, you know, before this meeting that that was what my attention was, but I, I do believe that it would be prudent to because this is not something that's in the teacher's contract where we have to say, this is a stipend that we've, we've negotiated. This is something we've arbitrarily decided to do in the past. And like I said, it's very likely that I could vote yes for it after looking at the, the, the Grand River's recommendations, but I, I think one has to come before the other.
I, I see where you're coming from, Mr. Walker. I guess my concern is this. If we look at Grand River's solutions, we look at their recommendations and we go, this is ridiculous. There's absolutely no way we can do any of this and it's all nonsense and none of it makes sense. We're still moving forward with some level of work in terms of diversity, equity and inclusion. What that looks like is something to be determined by the coordinator and the facilitators, right? And then they bring their recommendations to us as well. I don't think that their work ends if we don't. Grand River Solutions was, was just one piece of this puzzle. There's still a tremendous amount of work to do, whether or not those recommendations make sense, you know, for, for our district. So I think that no matter what we do, we're, we're, we're moving forward and we have to create some sort of comprehensive plan to do so. And if Grand River Solutions is not a part of it, that's unfortunate because there was a tremendous amount of work done, but that, that very well may be if their recommendations are not what works for our district. So I just, you know, want to make sure that we understand that, that just because Grand River Solution says something and we say no to it, doesn't mean then that's the end of this discussion or the end of the work.
I would also say too, the work has been being done continuously. It's not like Mrs. Strapi said, Grand River Solution is one piece of a very big puzzle. So Dr. Miller and his team have been working consistently on this, which is why the stipends were created to begin with. And July 1st was their first day and they have already put in a lot of work on getting the recommendations back, sorting through them and preparing them to even present to us. And also to Mrs. Strapi's point, this is going to be ongoing work, no matter what. This work is happening. It has not ceased happening and it's going to continue to happen. So I would say not to table it. We could vote on it separately and see where that falls.
Now, we're, we're sitting at the end of July and then this work's been happening, but it hasn't happened through any board approved stipendary measure. It's, it's happening, I guess, on the good faith of the employees and the direction of the superintendent gave them to, to do this work. But because we haven't approved any of it for the, this fiscal year, like they're operating in good faith and I hope they understand that I'm operating in good faith when I say, I want to look at the recommendations and I'm, I'm sure that there's going to be some that are, that are, that are logical that we're going to want to address. But to me, that's, this is a big part of it. And, you know, I want to see what we're, what the scope is before I, I vote yes to, to move forward with it and then put a price tag and then a commitment to pay an employee to do so.
So, so exactly. We'll go back to just pulling it out and voting on that separately. If there's no further discussion, then we are going to do a roll call to vote on resolutions. And I need a motion to accept resolutions one through 27 with resolution 3.4, the DEI stipends to be voted upon separately. So moved by Mrs. Strapi. Second by Mrs. Crisco. And is there any further discussion regarding any other resolutions?
We put in the, the policy changes as well, or did we already?
That was number 10. That was number 10. So we are also going to table from resolution number 10, policy 0143, decimal 2, policy 5722 and policy 7250. Those are going to be, oh no, 7250.
No, that was correct.
We're going to leave.
No.
We're going to table it. Okay. So those three are going to be tabled for the August 30th meeting. Got that, Mr. Cruz? Okay. So if there's no more discussion, can you please do a roll call?
Sure. So on resolutions one through seven, one through 27, excluding resolution 3.4 on the DI stipends, which we'll do separately. And also resolution 10 on the three policies that we're pulling until the next board meeting, which Ms. Freshy actually called out. I'm going to start with Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Dave's absent. Mrs. Strapi.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
And Mrs. Freshy.
Yes.
We have court motion pass. So now we're going to do on policy, I'm sorry, on resolution 3.4 on the DI stipends. Let's start with Mr. Walker.
Table.
We need a motion. Okay. So we need a motion to vote on 3.4, the stipends for the DEI coordinator and facilitators. Some of moved by Mrs. Droppi. Second, second by Mrs. Prisco. And is there any other discussion?
We're not tabling that. We're voting on that.
Correct.
Okay. Then I'm going to, is it my vote?
Yes.
No.
So Mr. Walker. Mr. Dave's absent. Mrs. Strapi.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy.
Yes.
Motion pass. We have court.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have? Do we have a? A motion for? No, I'm going to the addendum items. Oh my God. This is too big of a packet for me today. It is double sided. So we have addendum items. So I need a motion to accept addenda items number one and two. Moved by Mrs. Prisco.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Droppi. And is there any discussion on those two items? I'm just peeking. Nope. Mr. Walker, you have any discussion or comments on this?
I have a question.
Okay.
I don't see the difference between.
So there was a typo on the date.
Oh, oh, I see 2022, 2023. Thank you. Wow. I'm usually good with dates too. Thank you.
And if there's no other discussion on those, Mr. Cruz, can you please call the role?
Sure. Mr. Walker.
It's approved.
For the record, Mr. Dave's absent. Mrs. Strapi.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy.
Yes.
We have court motion pass. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And at this point, we we're going to open up to public comments on any topics. So if there's something that.
Can I make a quick comment really quick? I'm sorry. I should have said this before during discussion items. I just want to thank Dr. Moriello for your service to Rona. And thank you for all you've done for our students and for our special ed program. And in particular, our mental health programming in Verona. You will be missed and best of luck on your future ventures. And welcome, Ms. Giuseppe.
So I was going to wait until the end. So since you started that, I'm just going to, before we open up to public, Dr. Moriello, I too, you know, prepare just, you know, a few words, like the service that you've done for us. I've been here since the beginning when you were hired and watched you explode in this district and really take us to new heights. Your compassion, your service to the students and to the families, what you've done for mental health from, you know, we had that public question that brought in effective school solutions to coordinating the mental health fair, to your being recognized by your professional organization as an administrator of the year and your leadership and what you do for families and special education. We have been blessed for seven years to have you with us. And you are truly as, as a person, as a colleague, as somebody that I got to work with and admire your work very much. You're going to be missed. We have big shoes to fill. And like I said earlier, we get to reflect on what's been done. You have built a tremendous foundation on which we can expand our house on. So thank you so much. And we wish you really the best of luck. Yeah. Anybody else while we're on this?
No, just, good luck. Frank, you're going to be missed for Dr. Moriello. I'm sorry, but you, thank you for everything you've done for our district, for our students and for everyone that's in the community. Be missed.
So now we will open to public comment on any topic that is pressing that you want to speak to us about. We do have a three minute per speaker timeframe. So we appreciate staying within that timeframe. And you need to please state your name and your address when you approach the podium. So we are open at this point.
Hi, good evening. My name is Laurel Brawley. I'm at 72 Newman Avenue. Welcome Superintendent De Giuseppe. I just have a couple of questions about policy. I understand that there might be some confidentially confidentiality issues. So, so I would like to know how to proceed. And, and if it's something that can be further discussed. So one is the policy on background checks. It came to my attention, and this is all just what I'm hearing from my children and from parents. So know that some of the information that I'm getting might not be complete or accurate. So I, 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 I acknowledge that. But that two teachers in the high school had some who were hired, one was a sub, one was a regular teacher, had some sexual assault charges in their history, one actually involving a minor and had to get escorted out of the building by police. So just wanted to know the policy on background checks and how something like that could have been missed. And the other is again, hearing about a termination of the librarian here at the high school who was terminated because she displayed LBGTQ books and that some parents complained that it was alienating their children. I can't imagine that that's the reason why she was terminated, but I wanted to know how we could, how, if that could be further explored and how we would go about doing that. I've heard about a rice notification. If that comes into play here and, and how that would work.
So Mr.
Thank you.
Ms. Robert, do you want to adjust that, please?
So this is probably going to be a very unsatisfying answer. But when it comes to matters of personnel, the board is constrained in what they can talk about. So they can't talk about employment or termination of employment or anything going on with any current or former employee. As far as background check policies, I would check the policy manual on the website. And that should give you what the, the procedures are. If you have any further questions, I refer you to the superintendent's office.
Can say that it's, it's not Verona that does its own background service. We, we, we outsource that to the county or the, the county department of education, which for us would be in Newark. So any, any sub or, or para or teacher, they'd have to get that done through there. And Verona wouldn't be able to have the building until we got that green light. So it's more likely than not it was a false alarm. I don't, I can't talk about any specific thing with an employee, but the, the, the incident that you mentioned, I don't believe that it's, it's, it's likely that.
It's strictly rumor.
That's what I'm saying.
We're polite public.
It's Verona. Hello, my name is Mike Bone. I live at 24 Mountain View Road, Verona. Again, welcome and so long. You will be missed. Real quick, one side note, Ms. Freski talked about, I believe it was Ms. Freski talked about celebrating student achievement. I just wanted to give a shout out to a Verona graduate, young woman named Abby Burmeo, who has the honor of serving as an intern for Congressional Representative Mikey Sherrill. And I've seen it on social media. I just thought it was a real exciting thing and a real great opportunity for that young lady. So congratulations to her. I, I come here with a, with an issue that I have raised and I recognize the fact that this is something that probably would go into the weeds for the school board. So I, I understand your position here. I want to walk us back to the outset of COVID in the spring of 2020. I do have an issue with the school, the high school policy of going pass fail for that semester, spring semester of 2020. This is a very personal reason, but I would like to explain the context of my concern. My son at that time was a freshman. He had some, some issues, some personal issues that had to be resolved his first semester. His grades suffered because of that. Those issues were resolved over that break. He started oddly enough, the beginning of that spring semester exceptionally well. This would have superseded any shortcomings in his grades, his first semester of his freshman year. But because of the pass fail, those successful grades were effectively wiped out. He had gone on and had extremely successful sophomore, junior years. His grade point averages actually almost through the roof. He, his ACT and SAT scores were two, top 2% and top 1% in the country respectively. Overall, his grade point average is quite good, but because of that one semester, it is one bit short of where you would want it to be if you were going to certain places. And I, again, I recognize that of all the problems that you guys are seeing, this is the least of our problems. But this does determine where, where we might land in terms of secondary education. It also might play heavily in some scholarship opportunities. And I would love to see a situation where the school could find a way to recognize the students that were doing well in that semester and not be penalized by going to the pass fail situation. Again, I recognize the fact that this is a very personal issue and I recognize also it's very selfish. And again, of all the things to complain about, this is, I'm fortunate that this is the only thing I have to complain about. But I would love to see a situation. I have contacted the school administration, have had very polite disagreements with it and have not gotten to where I wanted, but I just felt that I would be remiss if I did not raise that issue. So thank you for your.
Contact my office. Contact me in my office. We had some solutions for similar issues in my former district that I think the board, the high school administration would be amenable to exploring.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And if your son wants to tutor a freshman, I know the guy.
No soliciting of the public. No soliciting of the public. Is there anybody else approaching the podium? No. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the new superintendent. My name is Maria Conti, 25 Afterglow Avenue. I have two boys in the school system. One is going into 11th, the other going into sixth grade. And both boys are also members of Verona's Boy Scout troop too. Scouts has done so much for my boys. My oldest son is working right now on his Eagle Scout service project and he's getting a chance to practice leadership skills and project management. He's learned so many other real world skills in the process of getting to Eagle, hopefully. And now my younger son is going to be working on some of those same skills. Scouts has also instilled so many positive values. The program is really a values oriented program. Things like loyalty and kindness and courtesy and those things all dovetail really nicely with the values oriented curriculum that we've been building here in, in Verona. And in fact, I'm such a big fan of scouts myself that now I am even more involved with the Cub Scout PAC that my sons had been in when they were little. That is PAC 32, which serves Brookdale and Lanning. And it's in connection with this that I'm here to ask you for your help. I hope I'm not dragging you into the weeds, which is our theme for tonight. But in recent years, the PAC has seen a severe drop in enrollment. And we believe that the difference in our enrollment is that we used to be able to go into the schools and present the program directly to kindergarten kids. We're no longer able to do that. And our enrollment numbers, since we've stopped being able to do that, have, have really dropped and bear out that relationship. This had stopped before the pandemic, so I'm not really sure what caused the change. I wasn't really as involved with the PAC then as I am now. But as I said, we would go in, in the spring, we would talk to the kids, the kids would get really jazzed. And this is now boys and girls both are able to participate in scouts. And then they'd go home and tell their parents about it and say, Mom, Dad, you know, I'd like you to take me to scouts. And that's a really important thing for parents who have not themselves had scouting experience, right? So getting that buy-in from the kids. And it's just not something that we're able to generate now through flyers and through advertising, which, which is something we try to do. Scouts is more than just an extracurricular. It's really a civic organization. It promotes community service. It promotes giving back. So I'm here to ask how PAC 32 might be able to get back into Brookdale and back into Lanning because without enrollment in our Cub Scout PAC, scouting in Verona is really going to cease to exist. So I'm hoping you can help me. Thank you.
Don't the scouts have the legal right to have their meetings within the school setting if they wish to?
They do. So that's something we should talk about offline.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Yeah. So we will check the policy, talk about that offline. And I think it's interesting that it stopped pre-pandemic. So it would be interesting to know.
Principals are even give really a call.
Yeah. So, so that's definitely something we could at least follow up with you about. And yeah, maybe Ms. Conti, you can leave your contact information with Ms. Giuseppe at the end of the meeting and we could follow back up with that.
Is our district, like we, we still give out, if there's like a recreation soccer flyer, do we still distribute that to all the families in town? Yeah.
Bring it in the Friday folder.
Are there any other public comments?
Hi, everybody. My name is Sarah Ford. I live at 35 Verona Place. And I, I just have a question I'd like to pose. Understanding, of course, that there is things regarding discipline and hip investigations that can't be discussed. I know all that is confidential. And so I won't ask any of those questions or say anything about that. But there was a incident recently that my daughter was involved in. And my question is, it doesn't really even concern her. Cause I understand how these things go. Kids get into arguments and back and forth. While it's disappointing sometimes and I feel like it gets down to a he said, she said, when children wind up not feeling safe. Part of that, there was also some accusations of some racist remarks, not involving my daughter, but so I'm getting a little choked up. But what I want to know is, you know, how we are in Verona, obviously we talk about diversity a lot because it's just not really here. We want to be welcoming to new students. And when, when something like this is investigated and somebody says, I never said that, is that really the end of it? Do we just kind of let that go? Or is there anything else we can do so our students who come into this town and are told that they don't belong here, regardless of someone saying, I never said it personally. I don't see why, you know, 10 year olds really don't have an agenda to lie about that sort of thing. So I'm always inclined to believe it, but I just want to know when it comes to something like that, if it's determined that, well, the kid said he didn't say it. Do we just move on? Or is there really anything else we can do? And that's an honest question. I mean, does it just end at the investigation?
Generally, and I'm going to speak because I've, again, it's day 12. We we generally in education would interview other people that may have witnessed. So if it was two kids in a room and no one else saw what was going on, that's may end at that point. But generally, the investigation would ask other people in the area, other students that may have seen or heard, teachers or other adults in the area that may have seen or heard. And what we what we will do, what we will be doing in Verona is sending our our HIV specialists and our counselors to some training on how to do different investigative techniques so they can investigate differently, because it is difficult when you have situations where you have little ones that are engaging in what could be conflict or maybe even more than just conflict.
Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak?
George Koziczek, Verona, New Jersey. Just to get back on the, I'm not really clear on that. You're going to vote on that tonight after? Or is that tabled until the next meeting? I I see that they started work already. Lisa, you had said they already started work on that, but nobody has approved that yet. So to me, this is where, a long story short, this is where I see that we run into problems. We do things before, you know, beforehand. There there are obviously some people who are thinking that, you know, this is going to move forward, and they started moving forward, whereas they really shouldn't have moved forward. So people who think that are moving it forward are going to push it forward anyway. The people who are going to get the stipends are definitely not going to say, no, this is not a good program for us. I went to a couple of the meetings. From what I hear is that Verona is diverse, it's just not diverse enough for some people. You know, unfortunately, you know, when you move into a town, you should probably look and see if the town is diverse enough for you. We don't need you to come into a town and make it diverse for you. You know, you don't have to be the diverse person to change the town. You know, we don't need people to change the town. So, you know, the people that I talked to at the meetings, they weren't diverse at all. You know, I let people have their say, and then when it was time for me to have my say, they weren't letting it happen, so I don't see that diversity happening. So whatever Ms. Shipper comes into and starts talking about, I can't expect her to say, no, you don't need any help at all, blah, blah, blah. Is it the teachers? Hopefully, we're not going to the students with this because we had Lydia tell us that Mrs. Shipper was not going to have any any connection with the students in one of the meetings. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that that was heard or, you know, that was relayed to everybody, that it's not going to reach the student level. It's just at the teacher level right now. I just want to make sure that that we're clear with or that that's the way that we're going, or that's the agenda that we're still following.
Mr. Koziczek, so to answer the first part of your question, that it was voting on the stipends happened. It just happened here tonight, and it passed, so the stipends are going forward. And moving forward with the work, I think it was explained during the discussion that Grand Rivers is only one piece of the work. Verona started diversity, equity, inclusion before those terms became hot buttons. We started several years ago, looking at our hiring practices, looking at curriculum, looking at the types of clubs. So this work has been going on for several years prior, and it's going to continue.
And where has it gone so far? It's been worked out for a couple of years.
Yeah, if if you go back and look at all our meetings and read through the minutes, you'll see changes that were made to curriculum, like there's constant updates to it, so a lot of them are subtle, and some of them are more obvious, but the work is just continuing. It's on a, it's on a continuum, so thank you.
Mr. Koziczek, we're not going to go back and forth. Thank you. Noted.
Are there any other public comments?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Damaris Stolen. I'm at 84 Lyndon Ave. I just, I guess, kind of like relating to some of this diversity issue. I have a daughter who's mixed, and I know that she mentions a lot of times how she doesn't really see a lot of people like me, what I look like in her school throughout. She's going to be an 11th grader now. So is there any effort at all to like hire people of diverse backgrounds? Just so kids can kind of experience, you know, I I know I teach at Glen Ridge, and my Spanish kids and my diverse kids just honestly love to see me because it's somebody different. And and I would like that for my daughter. She's almost out of here, but I would like her to see and other kids to see coming from grade school, that there's people that look like them and that they have somebody to look up to as well. So I just wanted to see if there was a, an effort at all to hire people of diverse and not just, you know, what we have. Thanks.
Thank you very much, and that that has been a topic that's come up in the past as well, and we've talked about that publicly as well. We expanded our recruiting efforts. We are going to a lot of different colleges, more diverse groups. There's a NEMNET, it's called, and I think we've mentioned that at meetings, and they are a firm that's in West Orange that we place ads in that specifically targets like a more diverse professional group of people. So our recruiting efforts are expanding, and that is part of the work that is going on, looking at what our practices are, the kind of applicant pool that we're attracting. At the end of the day, we hire based on the best qualified person to fit the position. And hopefully, our applicant pools are going to get bigger and bigger, so.
To, if I could chime in, like, a big part of the issue is that out of all the the certified teachers in the state, only 14% of the teachers that hold certifications are minority candidates, so i- if you're batting above 14%, you're actually going above the state average right now. And there's a lot of different reasons for that that have nothing to do with Verona or Glen Ridge or anything like that. I think that the, I think the way that we admit teachers and attract teachers into teacher prep programs is going to be the first way to get more people into it, because right now there's absolutely a teacher shortage. And you you look at some of the salaries we have on the agenda, and and we're starting people that because of that that teacher shortage. So I think there's a lot of layers to that problem, but I just understand where you're coming from.
I'd also like to add that throughout our committee process, working with Grand River Solutions, hiring was a specific committee, so we met several times to discuss what were the problems, as well as taking in the data from the community surveys, and where our opportunities were and what were some potential solutions. So hopefully, we'll see some recommendations come out of that from that.
Are there any other public comments? If not, we are going to close public comment session. And we're getting, we're going to adjourn the meeting. I need a motion to adjourn. Moved by Ms. Prisco.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Drouppi. And our next meeting is Tuesday, August 30th, and that's beginning. Our confidential session is at 6:00 PM, and our public session will begin 7:00 PM, and that will be here in the Learning Commons. And if there is no discussion on adjourning the meeting, I would say all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are all in favor. And we are officially adjourned. It is.